Good evening, everyone. We'll call the North Beach Town Council meeting to order for the evening of June 8th. We have five members in attendance, which I had not going to be able to be with us this evening, so we'll get out of form. As is our custom, we'll begin the meeting with our pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to recognize two council members from Chesty Beach, Derek Fodret and Larry Jaworski. Nice to have both of you with us this evening. I'm going to freshen your service by leading us on the pledge of allegiance.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please, if you're called, go.
Here.
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 Yeah.
Shout out.
Here.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting last month, May 8th.
So move.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special town council meeting on May 25th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. And approval from the work session last week, minutes. A vote?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Okay, we have those scheduled appointments. We have, is it Lieutenant?
Oh, I wish.
Pardon?
Deputy First Class Jacobs.
Please, give us our public safety report, Deputy.
For the month of May, we had 145 calls, down to 135 from April, and four calls down from the same time last year. So all break down, six, four calls were self-initiated, 81 calls received by other meetings, citizens, complaints, alarm, excuse me, armed companies, et cetera. Out of the 145, we had a CDS violation for heroin, which was both by arrest, one here with Uberdicks, and then a DUI. Any questions?
Well, that's not a bad report.
None.
One DUI, one arrest. The council have any questions of Deputy Jacobs?
I just hope you're taking care of yourself when you're arrested. Such a good that, nesse faber out there.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you.
Deputy, we have a big weekend this weekend.
Yes.
We all have the presents.
Yes.
Okay.
We got that.
Thank you.
Is there?
Okay, Joey, Treasury reporting.
Treasury reports for the period of April 5th to April 30th. Beginning balance was 749,000, total debts was 140,000, and total credits was 719,000. Ending balance at the end of April was 169,000. Investments in MLGIP was 3,200,000, and MLGIP sewer capital was 34,000, and MLGIP water capital was 7,000. Tow cash available to the town of North Beach at the end of April was $3,412,000. Last year for the same period was $2,644,000. Coward County Hotels tax collected this period of April was $331,000. For the same period last year, it was zero. For a state business license, it was $299,000, and for the same period last year, it was $322,000.
Our council, you see the itemization of the receipts and dispersments over $7,500? You have any questions, Julian? I'm sure that these are small numbers compared to our sister town's budget, Derek, but they're a little small town. You've got, you've got three times as many property owners as somebody has here in North Beach. Okay, no questions. So I have a motion to approve the Treasury report.
So move.
The second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. By the way, Julian, I want to recognize Julian, you know, we've been through a couple months where we've been talking about the water and sewer rate hikes, and getting credit where credit is due. I want to recognize, Julian, she was the one that recognized we had an impending shortfall. That was the trend. It was her idea that we incorporate measures to incentivize water conservation. It was her idea to contact the auditors and discuss the possibility of using some of our reserves to cushion the impact of the rate hike for the next couple of years to our rate payers. And I helped her, we, I went to the politics, but she, she crunched the numbers, and I think we, you know, come up with a solution that people understand and recognize that we're going to conserve water, and we're going to move toward a system where everyone pays the same amount of money for a gallon, I mean, no, a gallon of water, 1,000 gallons, as the case may be. Julian, you did an excellent job on that. Thank you.
I didn't do it alone, thank you.
Okay, Don, how about your?
Sir, good evening, how are you doing? Uh, it seemed like it's been a really busy month, going in a lot of different directions, and I didn't want to bore you off of my own research. So what we have in front of us is a, I do an update from the major things going on with the town. Um, update, quick update on the flood dike, contractor working on the east side, he's been there every day this week. He's almost at East Side Denim, and today actually closed him group at the South Denim. We did have flooding, I got called about three o'clock in the morning from the automated alarm at the house, and nicely did flood it through in the morning, and it was still flooded around 7:30. Um, so we did, you know, did go down with Tom, we got it closed today, so hopefully they'll take care of some of that used flooding.
I hope you're telling me that it flooded before you moved in.
Yes. He was there waiting for the tide to back down so it could finish that day. So it's too wet, he couldn't do any work until probably about 10:30, another clock. They say, they worked, you know, on that, and then the rock, that has to be added up with the mercury on the east side here. They're trying to get that done first, and then come back out and finish that group. They were there to finish the group, but it's too wet, have to do that, that, you know, on the day.
We've had some very high ties, just three or four weeks.
Very high ties. We were talking about it today. You know, my first daughter, you're calling it eight, ten years ago, who might have one or two a year. I think this year, only we had six instances where we were in flood in the country since January. So, and today, like today, you know, wouldn't win, wouldn't really, you know, there rain, there wind, there, there really be, just more water, more water.
Well, I'm glad we started this project five years ago.
Right. Exactly. If we finish, we got a permit, we can finish before we have this year, so we got.
Yeah, we just recognized the date, and we got a problem.
Right, right, we might be in trouble with next year, right?
Oh, it's looking pretty.
This level rises, the truth out there, and, hey, my dear, you know, hope you're ready to, must be something, we, uh, I would say, full believe in my name, I think, something out here, sure.
You all, you all staying down Chesty Beach, I'm sure?
It's, uh, water, pretty much around the ride, real, you know, party line?
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a real.
It's a nomadic, yeah, that's for sure. Streetscape project, heard we talked about this last couple of months, but EPW has completed all the prep work for landscape planning. New Lodge has the plan show behind, we set dirt mound behind the town sign here, that's the new size of the, the plan is up to be behind the sign. We also went and took the rock out of existing flower beds, and we're gonna max those with the new tree wells. So we get 14 new tree wells and new trees on that, and then the existing ones along Chesty Gap and lots to match up with the same dikes in this assembly. Did have the landscape contractor out on site twice for site meetings, he's a little busy, he's been on, I think, there about 20 days, right, in May, you know, not March, and we had enough to, um, he was telling me, I noticed the state highway wasn't having work, just because of the rain on some of his projects, he's been a lot of state highway, B G camp and projects and stuff. Inspector, inspector's actually shutting down, so it couldn't work.
Is it that now?
Yeah, not last, but, um, the only thing he's waiting on is we have a single stalk or a single trunk brick wall, and that was designed for reasons, you know, for a lot of site. He does have some, he tried to talk about putting in a multi stand, we say, I mean, that's the whole reason we wrote that, but he didn't have any, in close place, he didn't stand see. He was shipping a lot of loads, you know, earlier in winter, and I think that's kind of slowed down for, dropped back for, the trees isn't that, you know, being up trees this late in the year. He's got to make arrangements to go to Tennessee and get them, but, um, he gave the drop dead date of the 19th of June, because I thought it likely to be done this week, because the drag by races, it's a newer possibility to be done, but he, he does have this in there as soon as possible, he needs cancellation of the 19th, it's a few months, uh, up there. And he is, but then his contacts, you know, forcing it, so, um.
And the, all the flower beds are now hot, right?
All flower beds, Rick finished, Kennedy finished today, um, we told him he was coming tomorrow, so he finished today. He has all his power on, uh, next project of the week. Streetlights are supposed to be here the 19th of June, the heads and stuff, so hopefully next week, I tell you, we'll hold, get all poles, and then we'll be ready for the streetlights, and then, so put the banners, and, you know, like, the planters, and, you know, so soon on that, I think everything's gonna be, uh, maybe, so hopefully by, like I say, uh, two weeks of, uh, crap, definitely, I mean, if you, everything left, we got the sidewalk and crosswalk, we're working on that, hopefully that's the out to do, um, this summer, the council, they said, everybody, you know, we'll be good. Um, continue to work on Palace Park, uh, we finished right in front of the, front of the wall, put the new sidewalk and the new ceiling on there, finished right, actually installed sign, we get that dressed up and looking good, and, you know, cut down the block.
And it does, it really?
Thanks, kids are all student, so if you use your work, and then dress that up. We actually have the pavilion moved Monday, and Stacy had a good idea, the crane came in to do drag by races, so sadly, we were talking about, we actually got talent coming in, pick the pavilion up, move it, we were anticipating like $1,500 at least for a crane to come in, maybe charge us $200 because they hear our input, drag by races, so, got that moved from the old pad to new pad, cut, and the old pad off, I think that's gonna be a lot more room for people coming in the park, you know, like, opens it up a lot, and the new pad will look bigger, we've already had a lot of parents in the parks, in Thomas Nature, just have that in there, and it's also right next to the playground, so you might just let it sit right there, and watch it, it's pretty close to it, and that. Contractor for the sidewalk, he did the front entrance wall, and he did some bench pads in there, and then we had to move the pavilion before he could continue on his work. We got that moved, he did show up today, but then he got called on the nurse job, um, we haven't heard any place he's supposed to be at Monday, and hopefully we finish that , hopefully we get finished, because school is out, it's hard to see the evening tonight, and a lot of these in the park, they're, they're good, so, hopefully I'll be completed by next week. Um, worked, some small, I don't know, some work staff on language, like, correct the drag by boat races, uh, actually today, built a temporary stage out on the beach, um, we have words, electrical, etc., for the vendors, they get done tomorrow, they're like, I'm there, um, first, I think, license stage, I think, I'm talking about, maybe, I'm gonna come in, and some of the movies, so, maybe we gotta see, back there, so, four by four people, but actually, you know, not that easy, so, you know, we'll have to, so. Um, EPW also has started addressing some of the issues with the flower beds, uh, but I'm gonna break down, remaking all the center plate, uh, pieces of all the flower beds, so we went and made up for those, we started reinstalling those, and also, it's a lot of the six by sixes are damaged, and, uh, started to show some signs of these, where, so, well, by, you know, kind of getting ready for American Blue, and, you know, with that, as part of the cleanup, and that judgment is a lot, makes a lot, so it's up to work on that, among other things.
All right, Don, thank you, you, you're, you're an equipment, very busy this spring. Do you all have any questions, Don?
Just, just wanted to ask you one thing, is, is, no, I know you're with all the stuff that's going on, but it's from your mind, about the graffiti on, on, Friday, it came off, so, and, oh, Dave, we did so.
I know, there was some, there, 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 but then I think I saw.
Down at the bottom of the hill.
I saw, I saw that, I saw, I saw, like, new stuff, yeah.
I was hoping, I was like, driving, watching, digging, it was pretty bright, we were all kind of quick. Seeing on the same, uh, what, I was like, one thing I didn't put in my letters, and I didn't, I didn't ready to speak, but, uh, Route 261, um, meaning the state highway, this definitely, uh, kind of like the utilities meeting for the 24th, uh, um, that, but that was, uh, that was like planned at the schedule, I thought that was a throw dig, but they were waiting on their utility out of town, that, using any of this for the contest, and set that up for sure, so that happened, but, you know, I thought that would happen, by now, that had happened, um, with some variable call, there, whoever had, we will be out of state highway, so it's not happening, I set that, uh, I hope that happens pretty soon. The important to that is more to talk about, you know, maybe, you know, the river, the lines, that cost, yes, absolutely, 60 more back then, so absolutely, that'll be brought up, also, and then we brought raising the water line, because bringing that river a foot, foot and a half, was not a lot of height, but they had air, if you try to dig, and we're six feet, they're in mud, it could be a lot more than that, than it is in the 40s, so, you know, bring that up, bring the meters, you know, raising meters up as part of the project, uh, looking at setting the sidewalk on the east side, maybe, put it in front of it, those sites, plans to be brought in, you know, and I look forward to that happening pretty soon.
It's gotta be done comprehensively.
Right.
On the correct. Take so long just to get everybody marshaled.
Right.
You know, on a project like that, meters are permanent planning, you have to deal with all the issues.
Uh, you have a lot of time, and, and, this did to that point, you know, actually, so. One more thing, in there, uh, we had a couple of instances of water running out of town, um, a couple of weeks, we were talking about the water tank, and that's been completed extra year, new, uh, the town logo, everything's been on the town, but while we're running that system, I mean, I wish the towers could take it off, uh, take that down, because of, uh, the water in the tank, it was wet, and that actually affects the paint when you exit the tank, so we're running on green without new well, and what we do, we set that up on a DLC system, that operates on pressure, uh, when the pressure goes down, the pump actually speeds up, when the pressure goes up, the pumps, so that, that pump's constantly running, and we do that so we don't put it, put it in hand, and put it in the pot, and just let it blow out. But with that pump running all the time, like, that's 24 hours a day, what happened a couple times, we had a trip, we got hot one day, and, uh, B G D came out of time to check it out, but it's like, uh, instantaneous thing, where they didn't, a constant problem, it's just something created, heat or wind, or maybe loose wire, so we tried to help the troops, try to find, and then like, come up there and install it, if it happened twice. Luckily for us, we had a couple guys at Holland, it was a Saturday, but they were actually been checking the foot system, so it's done, five, 10, everybody, and then, uh, yesterday, America, I mean, actually, and he's over four floors, so he might be one of the first ones, like, I'm happy, whatever, what's going on, I'm glad he called, because we were at the shop, but what that was, is just a residence, no, we have a, uh, it's called a pressure transducer, and it does reduce the pressure in the tank. That transducer goes from 68 pounds to 70, that's pretty much operating, and what that means in the work guys, you're going like six feet up and down, so we're filling it, and it's full cuts all the, about six feet, pump comes in, it goes back up again. I don't know if it's just over time, it's, it's probably been about seven years now, but the gauge actually kind of got frozen at that 70ps side, so the system thinks that the town is full, it's normal height, and everything else, the gauge is reading 70, but the tank stayed docked, stayed dropping, and the tank had dropped low enough where it lost pressure, and that's what happened, and, you know, so we went out, we took the whole, uh, center core, you know, that, that, that seems to work, but we did do about 40 or 50 calls, uh, I mean, maybe, whatever, and, uh, and that, that was everything, the thing that's lucky to happen, under the, this, and, uh, it's kind of, it's also a break, just like the Florida, this and the chemicals, I mean, stuff that's happened, we got, did that as soon as possible.
I, I was able to.
She. Very bad, I'm, I'm back, you went in the shower, is there something?
Are we still, are we back in the water towers, that sort of?
Yeah, we're back in the water tower, what we had to do, once the tag is painted, um, we filled it up, uh, we had to pick up a couple samples, uh, run them for indeed, make sure, even though he didn't do any work inside the town.
Just in the picture.
First save, because it was offline for about three weeks, um, we got a good sample, I even, uh, we moved it back on, uh, it's, you know, full service, uh, we had a little trouble, essentially, did the V F P drive, with just something operating, for sure, just more than ever, you know, it's, uh, when the tower's full, we got two wells, you know, keep it lax, one doesn't work, the other, so you always have that, when you run on one well, you don't have a fat hole, that's, uh, three weeks of no sleep, waiting, hoping nothing happens, so, but, you know, I know a lot of residents, so that's kind of, I talked to, I mean, I did talk to a gentleman who's, I had a homeowners association in San Francisco, I had to explain everything, and he had a lot of calls, and, and they're, they're really high. Well, the problem with them is they're up high, so they lose work before we do in town, but we had work to shop, I know, we got a lot of pressure there, they're, you know, they're a little bit higher up, so, we go far, we do four, four, so, you know, this is for.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Yes.
Putting that fire out. John?
Sure. Good evening. Um, my June report for town engineer, zoning administrator, written report for you, uh, couple of highlights, uh, Don talked about the living shoreline flood dike project, uh, um, last month reported, I think we're still on track, but the, uh, the flood dike will be substantially complete by late John, July, late July, early August, and post that time, there may be, uh, some planning work to do. Of course, as we learn with the living shoreline, anytime you have planning involved, you need, you need to give it six months, and what doesn't survive, the contractor will have to come back and replace. And we're, we're evaluating, uh, drainage behind the dike, uh, we don't have a program with environmental concerns, uh, recently, uh, they were to obtain some more topographic information on the property and provide it to Don and I, so I would say, before, before the end of this month, we'll have a concerted plan and budget for Joanne on what we're gonna do there. Maryland State Highway upgrade project for 261 from, from just North Bay Street, the Illinois County line, um, their work is continuing towards a, the planned construction, starting for in the spring, 2020. We know, we know they're working, there hasn't, there probably won't be another coordination meeting where we can give you more details of just where that design is, uh, probably for another two or three months, but I'm sure Don will be keeping you updated on that as, as it progresses. Beach Dead Bridge project, I'm actually working with your new town engineer on, uh, pushing that thing through the federal and state agencies, so the permits are issued this fall, we'll work over the winter months. Pier Pavilion project, uh, I attached to my report, uh, tonight, a, a new schematic design for the thousand square foot structure, uh, it's different than the last one we showed you, where we had some staff review of that, and we thought it was, uh, too wide at the T section where it potentially blocked views of the pier going out to the T section, so we've narrowed that up for, for better views, uh.
Yeah, that looks much better now.
Okay, good. And the, uh, again, and we'll report more, uh, that will require N D E, uh, title wetland type permit, because it's construction over tidal, tidal waters, uh, when we introduce and pass the critical area ordinance tonight, that will satisfy the requirement that we have provision in our local critical area program that's, that supports us being able to build, uh, non, what they call non-water dependent facilities over tidal wetlands. We'll talk more about that. Clear bay requirements, that's on the agenda, and I have, I have some more detail to give you on that before that, that ordinance is introduced. Uh, walkway and bike path from Maryland 261, Ninth Street, they have the currently aligned, we did finish, uh, uh, the 30% design drawings, uh, that were used for the submission for the, uh, transportation, all the program funding for that, uh, we're, uh, we haven't heard anything yet about that actation that went in, in late May, but, uh, we're open that we get positive news on that, uh, by the end of summer, early fall. I've also been discussing that project with the new town engineer, uh, who, as I said, because, uh, under his watch, uh, if that project gets funded, uh, that project, that 30% design will be, and permit will actually be, uh, taken to, to, uh, full permits and fit documents. So he's, 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 he's up, up to speed on that, as with a number of other projects. I've met with him, uh, last week, went over a lot of the town engineers' records, a lot of procedures, um, and some of the, uh, potential projects, uh, me and Donnie and I are gonna meet within a week or so here and do, do a, a project evaluation, probably a, a site tour, to look at, look at areas like the Ninth Street, outfall, the 70, things that we've talked on and off about that may need be addressed under the, the new regime. All right, finally, but not the least, uh, my turn to say, thank you to town council for, uh, the opportunity to be of service to the town of North Beach, since I was appointed town engineer, so I'm gonna do it in, in the spring, fall of 1999, uh, since that time, a lot of water's going under the bridge, so to speak, uh, I have, I have, I have a, I have a lot of people to, to recognize and thank for being able to successfully serve , uh, uh, the, the town. It begins with Mayor Frazier in, in 1999, who served 1999 to 2006, which was the, the initial appointment, um, there was a break there from 2006 to 2010, where he served under, uh, Mayor Bo Douglas, and then since 2010, under the mayor and, and current, current regime. It's been a pleasure working with these administrations, uh, and we've been very supportive of the things that we've worked on from an engineering zoning standpoint, and part of the success is due to the good working relationship with, 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 with the town elected officials. And also, we have to thank, uh, your boards, your Board of Appeals, uh, with Jim Bradshaw, I've worked with since 99, just been a great guy to work with, and, and, and a lot of important issues through the Board of Appeals, uh, planning zoning, uh, uh, for several years with Eddie Jamison, uh, who is a great person and brought great, great ideas and guidance to the town on zoning, and since her regime, Michael Harman, the current, the current, uh, zoning chairman, and, and Michael is also a consummate, uh, uh, person in that position, and been, been a great asset to work with, for me. I hope I don't forget anybody, but, you know, town staff has been very much part of the success of engineering zoning since I've been here, Stacy, who keeps me straight all the time, keeps all straight, and, and Joanne, too, can, Joanne, both Stacy and Joanne. Joanne, both Stacy and Joanne. And then, of course, worked with, with Donnie on public works. Since when I first came on board, Donnie wasn't here, another public works director. Can't say his name, but, you know, Donnie's been a great asset in the town since he, since he's come on board. The reception staff, clerical staff, Marsha Steiner and now Kelly Osborne, they've been great to work with. And I can't forget Richard Ball. Haven't had a lot to do with Richard over the years, but our paths crossed many times. And Richard's been a great guy to work with, always one that was good critique of ideas and things and, and implementer of things that needed to be done. So I really appreciate, again, I appreciate working with the whole North Beach team and I wish you all much success in your, your service to the community, the residents, the landowners, and your visitors.
Thank you, John. We're going to have a reception following the council meeting this evening for John. We have a, I call it a slideshow because I go back to the Kodak Carousel day. We're going to project a recap of many of the projects that have occurred, been completed in town since nineteen ninety-nine. And I'll have a few words to say at that, at that time. But, John, thank you so much for your very faithful, outstanding professional service to the town of North Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, Rick, the code enforcement report, please.
I've got quite a few things picked up from last, last month that either people completed or were abated or have slowly started to work on, but the majority of them have been. Not as many budgets and stuff went out this time. We did address a bunch of entries, most of which have been cut down since we sent these letters out in the report that was done two days ago.
Yeah, I saw those ones on Dayton Avenue with the new fence.
Yep, gone, fences up.
And I was there at six on Dayton.
We said a couple of the abandoned properties have been, victims have gone through us. We're waiting on the cleanup on those. We did start some more rental property inspections, but during the past month, then we started the business inspections for this year, five hundred, three years, and we got about thirty, six more to do. Only fourteen house tags this time for grass and trash. Pretty much everybody complied with the, with the tags at home and made some schedule. We had something new on there this time with the new fee schedule on fines that went in. Over the last month, there were five hundred dollars worth of abatements and the fines and fees on top of those were an additional four hundred and eighteen dollars. And what that is, is the cost is what the actual abatement cost was for the contractor to do the work. And then the four hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents is what the town's fines and or administrative fees are that are associated with those.
Excellent work, excellent work.
I have a feeling those will probably, in the near future, are probably going to go up for a certain amount of time before they start to come back down and people start to
Take you seriously.
Say, yeah, if we don't see a delay, we should probably address it, so.
Any questions of Rick? Wait till they see you riding around in an electric vehicle, Rick. Really take.
Wise life one.
Thank you. By the way, Rick is, assuming part of John's responsibilities, he is the new zoning administrator for the, for the town. Okay, John, your marketing report.
For the month of May, I, which worked on a lot of advertisements to promote our events and the town venues that we have to rent here for weddings and other things. I completed the, I call it the positive town marketing brochure because it doesn't have all the rules and fees in it. And I've got those distributed to all of the county and state walking centers and visitor centers. I designed a new postcard banner that you may have seen on the waterfront. People use that as a photo backdrop and they are always uploading pictures to social media and stuff. So it's kind of a photo op. Here in town. Distributed the marketing postcards for the art festival and the sculpture competition that we're having in July. Promoted and attended the opening night of farmer's market, which is actually the, I think it was the third weekend because the first two were kind of running out. We had our giveaway that first night, took photographs and videos. Promoted the North Beach American Film Festival and advertised our grant winners for that. Set photos to Maryland Municipal League, they're doing their community theme at the convention this year, so they were asking for photos of, around town. So I have to add those out to them, so we should see those on some sort of a slideshow or something while we're there. Created and printed pictures for upcoming movies and concerts. Talked a lot with Megan McGrath from News Four and got video of the market descended down. I don't know if anyone saw it, but on Channel Four News of North Beach and the mayor's interview with her, but that was May twenty-sixth is when it aired. And I think they ran it a few times after that.
That was just part of the Memorial Day weekend. Quite a lot of turnout we had that night.
Yeah, and Richard will probably report about visitor counts from that airing.
Right, yeah, right.
So, so that was good. I made some design changes to a phone. We have for gates to go up at Callas Park as part of our streetscape here on Chesapeake Gallow and provided a description about the park and the gates used for a grant request that we're working on. The daily tasks of the website, the neighborhood watch page is thoroughly redone, some updates on the House and Garden Club page, the work in progress section on the homepage, which is some of our major projects going on that week, David. The members' calendar entries and email blast, our Facebook posts. I'll go back. Our Facebook likes for May increased by two hundred and fifty-one for a total of eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five. On my report, on the first page, is the natural picture of the postcard banner that's down on the waterfront. I won't go through all the upcoming events, but, you know, we have our market every Friday night. This Friday, we have the bamboo chicken band on the pavilion at six. Saturday is the Dragon Boat Festival, which we're all excited about. June seventeenth is our next movie on the beach, The Secret Life of Pets. And then from there, we have American Film Festival on the twenty-third of June and twenty-fifth. And plenty more events to watch for the rest of the summer. Last thing I wanted to point out, the graphic is up there and here. It's one post on Facebook on our North Beach, Maryland page. I posted it on May first, and it's just a listing of our events for the season. If you look at the bottom, with that one post, forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five people were reached by one post.
The sheriff.
One hundred and thirty-two people exited and four hundred and seventy-four people have shared it. So, three appetites.
Thank you, John. July fourth comes on Tuesday this week, this year, right? What night is the fireworks?
Sunday.
The Thursday.
Sunday.
The second?
Always our second.
Rain date the third.
Sunday night is the scheduled night for the fireworks, but rain dates the third. Okay, any questions, John?
You did a great work.
Yes. I don't, is Veronica here?
No.
Okay, we have her report. Richard, your report?
Mayor Council, we, history repeats itself from last year. We had twenty rain days in May last year, seventeen this year, so we're getting there. Revenue last year, over twenty-four, six, five, forty-seven thousand. This year, approximately in the same period, thirty-three thousand, so we're down thirteen thousand under last year for the revenue. Our visitor count, last year, two thousand five hundred and forty-nine, and this year it's one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. Residents, seven hundred and seventy-three, for two thousand and sixteen and six hundred and seventy-six this year. I'm really thrilled with that because I think in opposition, I shouldn't put down the two thousand and fifteen count. The two thousand and fifteen count was really, I think, twelve hundred people. So we had a bust last year at this time, but it looks like it's coming back. The resident count's getting better, so our total provoked just under a thousand. The zip code report, as you know, it's by family, not individual, and you're showing the top areas for visitors from Fiji County, Calvary County, Washington DC, Montgomery County, and then down the list are various counties in Virginia and Maryland. But I wanted to point out that the, when our guests come to the beach, they, we sort of ask them, hey, how'd you hear about us? Where are you, where are you coming from, etc. We had a flood of people watching that Channel Four News program, and most of them were from Virginia, so that's why I took the opportunity to highlight that. You can see Manassas, we had nobody from Manassas last year, this time, you know, period. And Indiana, Springfield, big jump, Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax, so that was a good boost, let's say, for Virginia, so. And then we're also keeping account of making homeworks to track the visitor count for Chesapeake Beach residents, so we have that, a nice number, fifty-eight have been checking in, so. That's all I have.
I wouldn't have mentioned the Virginia number. I was down there one afternoon, it was actually nice in the summer, and grew before a family came into Virginia, and the first thing they asked was, of course, how much of the rent or, I think, the rent or hold. And then the next question was, do you sell family passes?
That's encouraging.
And then this is the first time it's been here, so. And I have them on the beach, they're on the way in.
And we have sold a lot of family passes this season. I'll give a report on that next month. I'll have better numbers, so those have also increased.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, now is the time in our meeting for the public comment. Whoever's on the committee.
I have a question about this building, you know, it's been here for several years now, and I know that this is a green certified building, environmental and all that sort of stuff, but here's what I think about every once in a while. I know that there was special materials laying on the roof and plants that were, you know, whatever they're supposed to do. Do you think about them? Aren't they still up there? Are they alive? But that looks like.
Who can, who can give a report?
I'll send you a picture.
They're there to soak up the stormwater.
That's right.
Donnie?
Yeah, they're, they're put up there, you know, like you say, lead certification, they're there to soak up the stormwater. We tried, because it's a building, soaked up a lot, direct runoff of things, you know, of course, but actually, I looked at them yesterday from a distance, and they look really, looks pretty neat, like they're growing, they're doing good. The plants are the type that not, they don't get huge and don't overgrow, but, you know, it's all green, it's like a shag, carpoff, what it's up there looks like. But you can see them pretty good, even if Rick's kind enough, you know, in this building, you get a real good look from the third floor of his buildings, but you can actually see them.
You didn't hear anything?
Over at Dayton, I was at Dayton, you can see it all the way from there, actually.
And, and the gas.
The colors, it's pretty cool, the colors there, aren't they, actually?
Yeah, they're growing very quietly.
But you didn't hear anything?
I may just soon be able to take some pictures with some drones. I've seen more drones around, around town, you know? I think that's something we're going to have to deal with. But it's, it's doing well.
Yeah, I have put it in the newsletter, I did it the last time, but the guy comes and takes pictures, so I'll maybe send out something and print it on my website.
Actually, Randy's Dave Clement's hand, he's had a fight with her, he was passing over the building. He's an architect, he's a designer, actually, and, and.
Is Tommy repairing lights?
Dave was actually working for Tommy, trying to, he just bought a Tommy. He's kind of helping out there, I think, a whole time.
That's good to hear.
He's helped out, he's helping out more than what's happened with the stuff I have.
Okay, yes, Ron?
I just want to remind everybody about the next one we're going to do, which is Little Women, and it's a teen show, so it's only running two weekends, and it opens next Friday at sixteen.
Thank you, I'll be there, I'll be there.
We have some very talented.
Young people, yes, you certainly do. So many of them, young families involved, from each player. Okay, any other public comment? Thank you. All right, now we have some business to take care of. I saw Paul was with us. As a matter of fact, we need to make a couple of appointments this evening. Paul, you have met before, we've had some discussion, but tonight I'm going to ask for a motion to formally appoint Paul Woodburn to provide professional engineering services to the town of North Beach. Paul, stand up, everyone. Oh, it's Greg back there. Oh, okay, Paul.
Honored to be a Frager, but.
I didn't have my glasses on, Greg.
Ready to stand up, you know?
I have the council here tonight. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Paul Woodburn for professional services as the town of North Beach engineer.
Is there a second? Any discussion? This, this is not in lieu of Chesapeake Beach, this is in addition to.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
We had him first.
Yes, you did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Next, seated to my right is Karen Ruff. And, you know, I probably, this would be a good time to mention, once again, for the record, that we lost our attorney of twenty-seven years, John Shade, this past Tuesday. It's not the same here in town hall in North Beach without John, who provided for almost three decades outstanding, dependable counsel to, to myself, to, to other mayors, even preceding me, and to any number of council members. John will sorely be missed by all of us here. He had a special place in his heart for North Beach, I think his family would tell you that, because, and Marge told me that he often thought of his retiring days of coming down to North Beach and walking, the boardwalk, you know, with this cup of coffee. So there's very little we can do for the family at this point, but we are going to place a bench on the boardwalk with a plaque recognizing and honoring John Shade, our, our counsel, for so many outstanding years, John, for this year. Okay, having said that, I'm asking for a motion to appoint his successor from the same law firm, Karen Ruff, to provide ongoing professional legal services to the town of North Beach. Does that matter? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Due date for John will be tomorrow from two to four and six to eight at the Lee Funeral Home at Fowler Road and Route Four with the, where funeral services at Jesus the Good Shepherd Saturday at ten o'clock, that's our now harmony vote, for those of you who would like to attend. Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. This is the end of fiscal year business that we must attend to every year. Ordances have been introduced, and I'll ask for a motion to approve Order seventeen dash oh seven, budget adjustments for the fiscal year seventeen.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ordinance seventeen dash oh eight, becoming fiscal year budget eighteen, that has been introduced. Joe, is there anything you want to mention about this one?
Um, just that we will hold the tax rate as constant yield rate, which is the six three two nine, per, that's part of, per a hundred dollars per assessment. The sewer benefit rate will be a hundred and two dollars for water, and sewer benefit will be two hundred and fifty dollars annually, and tax will remain the same, at two hundred and ninety-five dollars annually. And the minimum fee of quarterly bill will also remain the same.
For another year. Okay, motion to approve?
Uh, second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carried. Ordinance seventeen dash oh nine, an ordinance repealing and replacing Article Ten, critical area overlay district requirements in the North Beach zoning ordinance. This is, uh, an ordinance that simply needs to be introduced tonight. John, want to recap very quickly the purpose of this?
Water area zoning code is, is the critical area requirements. These are man-headed requirements from the state for all land that's one thousand feet landward of, uh, the shoreline, or what they call remain high tideline. Uh, what that means to North Beach is, there's a, there's a line that, uh, almost goes to Greenwood Avenue, uh, in the westerly direction, uh, and it comes from, from the north direction comes in to about Sixth Street, and from the south direction comes into, to Second Street. I, I provided for you tonight some, a map, uh, that shows the expansion areas of the critical area, because one of the things this ordinance does is it adopts the new current DNR mapping as to where the, where the tidal shoreline is, but that has, the original critical area was established by a tidal shoreline that was mapped back in the seventies by DNR. Over the years, it has changed on, not so much on the, on the main waterfront, but on the south end and on the north end, it's changed because of the estuary, north and south. So, there are two areas, one area, um, in the vicinity of Second Street, uh, from Erie to Greenwood, and another area, uh, on the, between Sixth and Eighth Street, again, from that period of Greenwood, where, uh, properties within town will now be part of the, uh, the critical areas. Uh, North Beach is classified under the critical area program as intensely developed area, more commonly known as IDA. The development requirements for development in, in, in the IDA area are rather, uh, uh, simple, uh, you know, one item is, and this just doesn't apply, one is minimize the impact of fars, or there are no fars or woodlands in that area, so, so there's no impact there. That doesn't mean individual trees, I mean, that means things are classified as far as which is a, which is a block of trees, not, not individual trees on, on individual lives. And then the other item, other development requirement in the IDA is, is to streets treat stormwater, uh, stormwater. One day requirement is actually in the IDA, for new development projects, they take a look at, they have to analyze the runoff of the property and the nutrients in that runoff, and they have to provide devices so that, once the property's developed, the runoff has got ten percent less nutrients going into the bay. That's the stormwater requirement in IDA. Um, as, as to residential property, individual residential properties, they do not apply that rule, that rule is more applicable to many developments, such as what's gonna happen with the, with the hotel, uh, complex, uh, the, for residential lots, uh, that area is satisfied by things like small rain gardens and rain barrels. Uh, other than that, uh, the, the development requirements in the IDA that will now apply to these new areas will prevent anybody from building a deck, expanding their house, paving their driveway, or any, anything that would be intrusive to, to the landowner. The other items that this ordinance does, it brings into, because our code doesn't have, brings into our code, a program amendment allows for what they call non-water dependent facilities to build, to be built over tidal wetlands, and this is their, this is our pavilion on the pier. In order for us to get the state weather permit for that, uh, state M.D., won't look at unless we have that provision in the program in our critical areas, which this change will do. And the third item this does is, when we adopted the new zoning code with the critical area article in two thousand and sixteen, we had utilized a template that had been provided to us, uh, by critical areas. Critical areas looked at that, looked at what we finally adopted and said, look, we've updated the template, would you please update your code so that your critical area zoning follows the new template, which then means all the current state, state law requirements for critical areas. So that basically what this, what this ordinance does.
Thank you, John. The council, any questions, John? This is just for introduction tonight.
Um, I'd like to introduce, introduce in the, uh, ordinance seventeen dash oh nine, doing very little in this case.
Okay, thank you. To introduce, we'll have that on the, on the agenda in July for, for vote. Any other questions?
So, on this map, the new line comes down here and goes across, comes down here, goes across, to here, and back down.
Some of that got cut off.
On one side.
Oh, I see.
Okay, and here's the old line, kind of, a little bit, and that's all, and back down here, that's six, seven, seven, same line, and here's the new line, half a mile long.
Right.
Yeah, you're, 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 you want it in your eye, and, and, you can go, go as far as six, and get, get here, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm worried about my name. I just, yeah.
I'll stand with you. I've got, I've got the...
That's all right, that's all right. I got Randy's.
We'll get you going, we'll get you going, Jane.
Thank you, John. Any other questions? All right, you can have a seat, John. I think we're finished with that. Did you, we all hear Throwdown McGonlon about the mayor's cup? You're invited, you're invited to comment, Larry, about the Taste of the Beaches, or, I, I forgot to mention or recognize you during our public comment.
Well, thanks for the opportunity. I just wanted to, uh, share with everyone that the plan is underway right now for an event called Taste of the Beaches, it will be September ninth at, uh, Cowan Field from one to five o'clock, and what is intended to be there is a number of vendors to provide food samples and drink samples and things, but also a lot of local organizations, so Sea Box will be there, Railway Museum will be there, Library, the idea is for people to walk away from that event saying, wow, there's a whole lot going on in those two towns, and that Beaches is intentional, and that it's intended to be for both towns, to increase the recognition of people doing it. Mayor's already reached out to us and has offered a contribution to support it, and we would like to make this as much of a joint effort as possible. We have shared some of the initial information that's going to be distributed to potential vendors and sponsors, uh, we'd like to get your concurrence with that information before we begin distributing it, but we need to get going, as they say. So, we appreciate all your support, and we look forward to working very cooperatively and collaboratively with both councils on this event. Thank you.
All right, I think it's an excellent idea, and I want to thank you so much for reaching out to, to make it a joint venture so that our restaurants can participate as well as your, your own, so we can get to people from Calhoun County, Chesapeake Beach, and North Beach. Hope it's very successful.
Hope so, thank you.
And I'd say, we wanted to make the council aware of this event before he begins, you know, soliciting participation, restaurants in town, because you're all here second hand. Taste of the Beaches, September ninth at Cowan Field, and you're not charging anything to the, uh...
No, the plan right now is, there will be no charge to the vendors, we are going to be reaching out to sponsors to help offset some of the costs for the event, but for the vendors, and that would be the Neptunes, and Mexico, and Sweet Sues, and Adners, and Traders, all those people, there'll be no charge to them. The plan right now is that we are going to be selling, uh, ticket books to people who come to the event, don't have to buy one, there's no admission, you don't have to buy one, but if you buy one, what the vendors will be able to do is say, okay, for my crab cake, it's two tickets, and the attendee will give them the two tickets at the end of the day, that particular vendor can turn them in, and will be reimbursed for some of those costs. We are also going to have musical entertainment, I'm very excited to say, we've already got John Luskey, agreed to participate at the event. And just in terms of the mayor's cup, I offered to the mayor the challenge that whichever town is ahead of the other town is offered free drinks by the other town.
We'll sign off, everybody, sign off on that? All right, okay, thank you. So, I'd be sure we include that Taste of the Beaches in our event calendar.
Say, "Arrgh!"
Okay, um, we have a couple of, three resolutions. Uh, resolution, we're applying for a couple of grants, but, uh, before we can officially do this, and as part of the application process, we have to recognize that the town did pass a resolution in support of those applications, so they've not gone in yet, but they will as soon as we approve these resolutions. The first is for a community legacy grant to, to assist the town in, uh, purchasing property related to a civic center complex. Do I have a motion for its approval?
Second?
Second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. The next, this is an app, um, a resolution to apply for another community legacy program for funds to help us with the elevated walkway, which we've heard, uh, so much about already tonight, on Route two sixty-one, between Ninth Street and the Anonville County Line. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Second?
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. And another end of fiscal year resolution to establish certain fees within the town of North Beach, which you all have already done, just simply, uh, formalizes that in the way of a resolution, so do I have a motion for its adoption?
Second?
Second? Any discussion? Resolution number seventeen dash oh eight has passed. Thank you. Uh, Granny, your report?
Thank you, Larry.
Sure. Making the start, you're in there.
Uh, thank everyone for coming out and staying after. We have Dragon Boat this weekend, which is always in front of us, and then the next week we have the movie. And then after that, everything gets fuzzy, um, more than a lot, so I know the film festival's there, and then we're out for the, for the MML convention in North City, but there's always a good place for us to go, and you get to the other towns, um, get up some classes for us to take, which helps us on this end. Anything else?
Thank you, Mickey.
Couple things, uh, John, thank you so much for all your service, a blessing, and I know you're so to be around, we'll see you on the bicycle instead of walking around. Second part, please keep, uh, John Shay's family in your prayers, he was a special part of our town, um, he may not be here, but he will always be with us. Third, we have an amazing new website that, that really gets information out. One of the things I noticed when the water pressure went down, and, and, was I saw people had questions on social media, but it wasn't directed at the proper location, it was out there someplace, it wasn't up to the town.
Sound check.
It was out there someplace, it was out there someplace, and, you know, something like that, upset, and I would respond, and I'm like, well, that's on your personal page, I mean, we don't monitor personal pages there, but what I want to pass on is that, if you go to northbeachmd.org and sign up, you'll be notified, if, if you do use social media, go on our Facebook page, you can tell, I mean, we have nineteen hundred residents, but we have eighty-three hundred people that like our page, it's very active, really sign up, we're, we're looking to do some other stuff that's out there, we're thinking about it, but definitely go to northbeachmd.org, sign up to get the emails, you'll be notified of everything that's going on, and if you ever have a question or a concern, please reach out to Town Hall, Public Works, go to the enforcement somebody, and not just out there in cyberspace, because we don't monitor for that, so, thank you so much for coming.
Well, well said, Mike. Paul? Jane?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you all for coming out and, uh, supporting the channel and supporting us in hard budgeted things that we have to do here. It's a little disconcerting sometimes, we have to look at all those numbers, and figure we have, thank you, Chelan, for all of your hard work in making it easier for us than just the town.
Ready, ready?
Yeah, um, I, I, I want to say, this has probably been the most difficult council we've, uh, attended in mine.
Forty-one.
Five terms, whatever it is, since nineteen eighty-seven, um, my very good friend John Shay died this week, um, John Hoffman, who I met, when we were putting, designing the water system, whenever, it was nineteen eighty-six, eighty-five, um, you know, is retired, so that, that's, it's, it's a little... I did want to mention, one of our police officers was honored a week or so ago, and for those of you on that jail, remember the local spark, um, was honored by having his name put on the law enforcement officer's wall, our motto wall, it, it was Ed Wilson, he died, suffered fatal heart attack, um, answered, well, after the storm, did the call in nineteen ninety-two, and, um, shortly after that, we, uh, laws and police, police department, so, it's, it's been a, a, a difficult year, and... Now that I'm buddy all day, I'm having a good time.
Okay, I would invite all of you to please stay, we're going to, we have some refreshments, uh, we're going to have a, a show, and, uh, I have a little special gift that we'll give to John during the, uh, party. Take it up. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, please enjoy the Dragon Boat races Saturday, and we'll see you. We're going to get in. Have some solar valley.
Two months ago, we actually...
Report everyone begins to help themselves through refreshments and everyone is seated and paying attention. If you want to ask the dawn if she would begin to project that... Oh, we get a couple of minutes to sit down.
I understand we're living down here.
Living down.
You're done?
Yeah. Make you turn it down a little bit later.
Honey, I live where on Hundred River called Wolf Road, about a mile or plus.
Where is John?
He's right here. He wants to wear hair.
Hi, Scott.
Yeah, John, you want to provide some of the commentary? We want to go highlight some of the projects. You've got an insight that none of the rest of us have about some of the problems or difficulties and we'll just go through these and kind of share some memories with them. Probably a dozen paws. Is that John?
That's me. That's the fat belly.
Is that John?
No, this is Bike Path.
This is Bike Path. Oh yeah, I know who that is. Yeah, there it is. That turned out beautifully, John.
Yeah. Well, Donnie did a great job on that too.
The whole overlook part. Boy, y'all remember that old... Randy, you remember the old...
The old land. The water was fine with the surfers.
Yeah.
This is about beaches. The trail to Burn Oaks.
Oh yeah, that's the Dayton Avenue between Fort and Fifth. Where's that?
Dayton Avenue.
Dayton Avenue.
Oak Slips.
Oak Slips?
There's a boat, the boat's missing.
That's the same boat that just keeps coming back.
It's in there. I thought they were last night.
Oh yeah, remember the temporary breakwater?
Temporary breakwater. And I think that's... I think that's really proven itself over the years.
Okay, now this is the construction of Sunrise Garden right here. Where'd you have it here? That just turned out just perfect.
It does.
What's that?
That is our most part.
Before, yeah.
That's the after.
That's Sunrise. Was that a little far? I can tell you the boardwalk didn't... Do we have anything from Isabel?
You know, that piece you Randy mentioned that, you know...
You're a hand, John. The boys and girls club built it back around, well, fifteen years ago. Yeah. For the living... Well, that was before the living show. Yeah, before. I hate to think of the number of permit applications that John said to... He did tediously fill out it without any... Remember when the sand went out that far? Yeah.
All decent, see?
Yeah, that... That sand went out that far. That was the first big beach replacement job in about two thousand and two. And we really used a lot of trucking sand.
That's today, Tisby Avenue.
Yeah, the health center, that was built.
That's the party lot before and that's after down towards seven.
The cross. Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
That's behind Murphy's house. That actually is where the flood site will be going. That area will be...
Yeah, John, you know what I'm talking about, isn't though?
Well, you know, Isabel was a dramatic storm, did a lot of damage. But, you know, retrospect, it did a lot of good for the town because it got rid of a lot of dilapidated infrastructure and houses. And you take a look at what's been replaced that was damaged because of Isabel, and I could say the town's much better off with what's out there today. We had... We had... We had one house at the corner of Ninth and Atlantic that was built to the FEMA flood standards before Isabel. That house had zero damage from Isabel and every... Almost every other house up and down, from all the way from Seventh Street to the Murphys at the end north, had substantial damage.
That was Chris and Amy...
Chris and Amy Home.
Chris and Amy Home.
Yeah. Yeah, Mark's was built to the old standards. That was not yet long there.
Has that... Seen the new house going up and down?
Yeah. Been watching.
John Hook, has been the most challenging project that you can recall.
Well, I think dealing with shore erosion at the beachfront has been the most challenging. I think the idea of the temporary breakwater was a good choice and I think it's working well. It's unfortunate that the original stone breakwaters did do the job. The boys and girls club was challenging because of limited budget and trying to accomplish all of these for the boys and girls club on a site that had poor, very poor soils and took a lot of foundation work and substantial foundation work in order to be able and even would have built it at that site.
Yeah, and you spanned a couple different administrations too. Always makes a real difference. John, can we have the lights now, please? John, the town certainly never repaid for all the professionalism and dedication and commitment that you've had to this town, but we do have something up here for you. I'd like to... Want you to take it and open it up, something that will help you remember the town of North Beach. Of course, you're always welcome to come back. Why don't you go ahead and open it up? Please.
Wow. Great. New watch. I've been going away.
We got that, John? Because I know it's here, you don't know it's here. It's inscribed in the back. North Beach will always remember your dedication. Time to relax.
Again, again, the people I worked with in North Beach made my reign as successful as was. We had great people here, a lot of interest in the town and really, really made my work enjoyable. And you had good mayors and good town councils.
Thank you, John.
Abigail.
If anybody would like to leave an awful remark, certainly now would be the time to do it.
I would say something.
Okay.
John, it's been a pleasure, but I wanted to say that these pictures that I had of you, Abigail was in the picture with you, so I had to crowd her out. There was a theme, it was always Abigail and food.
Food's Abigail.
Thank you, John.
You know, I was going to say, I didn't know anything about a beach town and I learned so much from John because I'm so interested, you know, in this town and the problems, you know, of the town before the beach erosion and all that. So I've enjoyed always talking with John and always heard something when you talk to John.
Wealth of information and experience. And you know, Paul, the incoming engineer is going to be dealing with the same problems and dealing with them in Chesapeake Beach now, but this rising sea level and shoreline erosion, flooding, these are issues that will always be part of... Will be part of North Beach's future. Abigail.
John, I just want to, you know, wish you all the best, you know, enjoy, you know, your retirement. But John just didn't help me to, you know, go through the constructions in my business and he's a very support art person. He always supports my business also and that touched my heart and I appreciate that when you come into my shows and you support the arts in the county and I expect to continue doing that.
It was always a joy. It was a challenge and an enjoy and enjoyment working with you, Abigail. You know, your standards are pretty high. Sometimes an engineer and we have to say, "Well, we got most of it done and we're going to..."
Make some compromises.
We make some compromises and say, "But there's no compromise with Abigail."
Thank you. Thank you for all your time, not just to me, but for this town that I love so much. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to...
Yes, please.
...do comments. Me and my wife moved to Chesapeake Beach probably about twenty-two years ago and I first had the pleasure to meet John because of a new homeowner at Bridgefield Station. We had thirteen house built in there. And the contractor at the time, John was a civil engineer for Chesapeake Beach. And if you recall, John, in my case, I probably forgot about it, but the contractor had been house looking close to the road and contracted and there was COVID violation or something and developer being in the deep with my problem with the town. I remember having to come to John, me and my wife, and find out how we're going to get out of this issue of this house that we used, well, I think it's built, you know, close to the road. John has planted trees in the front corner, making walks for the people. But that was the start of really having been real close to John over the years, but we worked together professionally in the private sector. I know I was a project manager for North Beach Senior Center. John was... You were a civil engineer on that, right?
Right.
Also with the Donnie, four times, from NSS, if you're counting another constant, the renovation of the boardwalk when I worked as a pioneer builder. And I realized tonight that John's a constant, particularly for this town. And it's always hard when you lose your reliable constants. Things are always changing, you know, and we accept that, but John's had a long run here. I'm sure everybody appreciates that and add it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very nice remarks. Well, thank you. Let's give John the final round of applause. Okay, please enjoy some of the refreshments.
Oh, John, don't I take a picture of you in there?